It is time to lock, we've got an executive session, if you would please silence your cellphones and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in the great justice for all.
It's like, fascinating. Alright, so, first item of this evening is public speaking in the Jackson Local Schools Foundation. If you're comfortable.
Hello, I'm Justin Hurst, the president of the Jackson Local Schools Foundation. My address is six four six four Corinth Drive, northwest Canton, Ohio four four seven one eight. And with me this evening is Jim Camp, our immediate past president. We are here today on behalf of Jackson Local Schools Foundation to express our thanks and gratitude to the Shore Group, to Jackson Township, and to Jackson Local Schools, especially our superintendent, Mr. Loretto, and our board of education. First, the township, thank you to the trustees, and thank you to the economic development director Gonzalez and the law director Ricardo. Thank you for attracting the Shore Group to our township. And in doing so, placing our foundation as a symbol of a generous annual contribution from them. This contribution will allow us to continue the important work for our kids, and it's critical as we find our way through this pandemic. No doubt, some of these funds will be used to help families who are struggling, and to purchase additional student computers, as they are so important for all students, especially those who e-learn remotely. Quickly, I'd like to update you on the two matters related to the foundation. First, I'm excited to share with you the effect of January one, we will be merging the Jackson High School Alumni Association. The goal will be to unify both organizations' efforts within Jackson Local Schools. We will be stronger together. Secondly, we do still plan to have the Polar Bear launch.
Marked calendars.
For February the sixth.
I was wondering about that.
Yeah, there's something to fill in. He's in charge.
I'll be sure to say more than sixty.
Now, it'll be modified to adhere to Kirk Pro, Kirk Hall, and still do plan to have the event. More on that to come. Finally, I'd like to express our gratitude to the Shore Group. Thank you. Sure, but.
He just texted me, he's on his way, he's driving a little late, do you guys want to?
Sure. Yeah, I can just picture this other picture.
He just texted.
Okay, yeah, I'll save this last part certainly.
Absolutely.
Present, yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Justin.
Sure.
We're double public speaking. Next, we have a gold star memorial. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Julia Edwards, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Lake Haven Garden Club, of which I'm the president, and on behalf of Whitney Savina, who is a senior at Jackson High School. And we are requesting that trustees approve, give us permission to place a gold star memorial in Jackson Park North, a little bit to the left, I don't know if that's north, uh, the blue star memorial is there now. Um, Savannah, or Whitney, uh, sent me an email a few weeks ago, asked for, asked for collaboration of our garden club. And as you may or may not know, the gold and blue star memorials are a project of the national and the state garden clubs. So, we need a garden club to collaborate in terms of putting up one of those memorials. And he said yes, even though we're a very small club, but Whitney has assured me that she will be raising all the funds to put the memorial on. So, uh, the marker is currently going to cost fifteen hundred and ninety dollars. Now, I don't know if there'll be some other expenses in terms of placing, uh, the marker, and I'm not sure we can talk about those as time goes by. We have been in touch with David Riwadi, the parks director, and, uh, he has provided a sketch of where he thinks the marker should go. Right now, there is a plant there that will be very easy to remove, there's also a tree that probably just needs to be trimmed, so that the top part of the marker, uh, will not be blocked in any way. And I also request that they, that if in fact that ground slopes down a little bit, at that point, make sure the memorials are even, uh, across the top, that the gold star memorial should be at least even higher than the blue star. And I'm sure most of you know that the gold star memorial honors the families of those who have lost or died in the service of our country, events of our country. So, what may be necessary from the Parks Department and the trustees is a little bit of change in the landscaping there. It's, uh, currently discussed kind of straight across and it probably needs to bulge out just a little bit. Um, and maybe the removal of that plant, I looked at the plant today, it looks like a seal, which is very easy to remove, and, uh, replace if we want to replace that. Um, in terms of other landscaping, um, we're talking with Whitney in regard to that, whether she will get the Jackson Porticulture. Once the Lake Haven Garden Club, they help out with that also, I don't know. Her target date for putting the memorial or celebrating the dedication memorial will be next Memorial Day sometime. I don't know how that'll go in conjunction with all the other, um, uh, dedication ceremonies that go on at that time, but that's her, uh, approximate date. Uh, when we send in the application, it goes through the, um, Garden Club of Ohio first, their chairwoman, then their president, and then they send it on to the National Garden Club President. And when that application is put in, the check for fifteen hundred and ninety dollars has to come in at that point in time. It will take about two weeks to process that request, once the, the form is filled out and the check is there. Then it will probably take about sixteen weeks for the company to manufacture the bronze memorial and then send it on its way. Um, there needs to be somebody here present to receive it. Uh, David Riwadi has assured me when the blue star memorial was put in, that the township garage did accept the, uh, the memorial when it came in, the marker when it came in. And when I mentioned the donate maintenance, he said there really hasn't been a lot of maintenance, uh, that's needs to be done on the blue star, so I would assume would not be very much necessary to maintain the gold star. Um, the donations are, uh, to a organization called Heroes Honor Inc., um, and, uh, they're located in North Canton, some of you may be familiar with them. So, if the trustees would like to make a donation on behalf of the memorial, we'd certainly love to have that. Of our. Heroes Honor Inc. and put Jackson Gold on the medal on it. Um, but I'm sure we can, uh, uh, do justice to the memorial at that spot. It's, uh, the three flags would be in the middle of the, of the memorials, the blue star on the right, the, the gold star on the left. And there would be a dedication ceremony, um, next year at the time of the marker placement. And, uh, it will be pretty much whatever we want it to be in terms of, uh, donating this, so we'll be working with her. I haven't met her in person yet, uh, we were supposed to meet last Friday with three or four of us from the Lake Haven Garden Club, and she is, as you may know, in quarantine, so she was exposed to something with COVID. So, we have not met face to face yet, if she's standing in the room, I wouldn't know who she is. So, we have been communicating by email, and I have given her our full support and backing, and, uh, we'll make sure, uh, that it will get done one way or the other, but I have, uh, from my communications with her, I have full confidence that she'll be able to raise the money and do justice on the dedication ceremony for the gold star memorial. So, I guess what we're asking for you is, is permission, uh, to place it in Jackson North Park, um, and, uh, to do some of the landscaping that we may need to place the marker and to accept the marker when it comes out. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so, uh, first, we're going to tie that back into a little bit here, but when you get us back up, because the project is part of Whitney's, um, Jackson Academy of Global Studies, Jackson, so that's where she's bringing it from. So, it's school-related functions that are bringing her to this, to this piece, so it's really nice that you're all here to kind of bring that all back together. Um, we've looked at that with Mr. Riwadi, Mr. Rome, I don't see the issue in doing it, it's perfect, it'll look great right there, side by side, I think it's all fine. So, you know, from my seat, I'd make a motion that we authorize the placement of the gold star memorial in North Park, as described and in conjunction with your.
Second. Who said second?
On favor.
Aye. Thank you very much, and thanks for helping.
Judge, I want you to come in.
Okay, okay. Just to put a caper on everything.
The recipient is now in the room.
Yes. Mr. Shore, I'm, I'm Justin Hurst, I'm the president of the, uh, Jackson Local Schools Foundation.
Jerry, why don't you come on?
This is Jim Camp, our immediate past president.
This one, take it, see if we can stay.
We're here to express our gratitude, uh, thank you for choosing Jackson Township, uh, and we are the fortunate recipients of, of the annual contribution that will be made, and we're, we're very grateful. Uh, congratulations on your new, uh, fantastic headquarters, and, uh, we have a small plaque for you as a, as a thank you for coming.
Well, thank you for recognizing us, we sincerely love Jackson Township, a great community.
Thanks.
Uh, we've been gone for too long, and certainly the, the hopefully trustees, uh, uh, they made it possible for us to come back, and, uh, it was just, uh, it was tough for us to leave, uh, but, uh, it was even better for us to come, to be honest with you. So, we look forward to that, and the community. Honestly, it's our move and our investment, we give the community, I agree with the same investment, and I'm so sincerely appreciative. And investing in kids is a great investment.
Here's the plaque, it says, "Congratulations on your new headquarters, thank you for your long-term partnership with the Jackson Local Schools Foundation, presented October two thousand and twelve." Awesome. Thank you. Thank you.
Can we get a picture? It's on film right now, you certainly can get a picture, yes. Absolutely.
You guys available?
You don't think you have the best? Why don't you got a number? I have a good, right fast, we can all come up here and get one. You have anyone? Maybe one come up there.
Sure.
Oh, that was a great facility.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, see you later.
Thanks, Roger. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Very chief. First thing I have on the agenda is swearing in a few full-time officers. We were bringing in one at a time, if you want me to do them both, both together with their families. Twenty-five of them.
Yeah.
Anthony Richardson, first, please.
There's no rush.
Hi, state your name.
Hi, Anthony G. Richardson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
A full-time patrol officer and police constable. Required by law.
Required by law.
Required as assigned to me by the chief.
Required as assigned to me by the chief.
For the Jackson Township Police District Department.
For the Jackson Township Police District Department.
Stark County Ohio.
Stark County Ohio.
Okay, if we could get a picture with you and the trustees first, and then we have the family, if you want to come up to get a picture, so.
Why are you smiling? Why are you smiling?
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Terry, you've been up there before, haven't you? So, you've been up there before, haven't you?
Ah, once.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Good evening.
You too.
Congratulations. Congratulations. See you over there. Thank you.
Say it, Terry.
Terry, guys.
How are you?
That's nice.
That's gonna save the day. Did he still dedicate? He just retired.
So, you have two more. That must have worked, if I said, "Thank you much better." I guess.
That's Microsoft.
It has, I love it. It's the best laptop I've ever owned. Wait till you're close. You're sitting there, sitting there.
Hi, state your name.
Hi, Stephen Hague.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
A full-time patrol officer and police constable.
A full-time patrol officer and police constable.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Required as assigned to me by the chief.
Required as assigned to me by the chief.
For Jackson Township Police District Department.
For the Jackson Township Police District Department.
Stark County Ohio.
Stark County Ohio.
Congratulations.
Yeah, I get to go back to shake. Hey, I'm gonna get some pictures.
Thank you, coming up now, if I get the trustees and the fiscal officer.
We gotta keep this on.
Yeah, if you guys want to take a picture.
Okay. Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, wanna take a, take a picture of poker?
It was all.
Do you really want?
No, I didn't. I'll tell you. That way it's wrong. Would you guys, do we need to take a picture, take a picture? Not for fit. Of course, I think all this works for. That's the fun part.
Hey, Todd.
Yes, sir.
Uh, can we have the square hand, strong legit.
Yeah, but I've got to do their other stuff, well, you got, you have him in the middle, don't you?
Yeah, I got, uh, all the three swearing heads up front.
Okay.
I don't care what order you fill it.
That's not, who are you swearing? Is somebody left here?
Yeah, we have one more.
Oh.
They're gonna swear in support, I, officer.
I forgot about that. I thought I was accepting neuros before I swore him in, but.
You're, you're getting odd.
That's okay, we already, we're moving around, Mike is fine. Thanks for the, heads up. We're just talking. Yep.
Hi, state your name.
Hi, Joseph J. Stunblowski.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
A part-time patrol officer and police constable.
A part-time patrol officer and police constable.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Required as assigned to me by the chief.
Required as assigned to me by the chief.
For the Jackson Township Police District Department.
For the Jackson Township Police District Department.
Stark County Ohio.
Stark County Ohio.
There it is.
Just stay up there with the trustees and this officer for a picture, and any of your family that you'd like to come up and give a picture of.
Okay.
When you retire, they're all gonna say, "Why were you up there with masks?" You guys can come up. You guys have a camera, have to, very, please, phone, have to take a picture.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did he sign with the name or?
He, he didn't have it. He signed with you already. That one, I did have a copy of this. You get four tickets from the, you know, just being the vinyl one.
I just can't say words.
Okay. Now. Now I'm. Okay. So.
Uh, I make a motion that we hereby accept attached oath of office for Anthony G. Richardson and Stephen M. Hague as full-time patrol officers and police constables for the Jackson Township Police District, Stark County Ohio.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
And, uh, I'll make a motion that we hereby accept attached oath of office for Joseph J. Stunblowski as a part-time patrol officer and police constable for the Jackson Township Police District, Stark County Ohio.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Alright, chief.
Okay, next I have appointment of secretary.
Uh, I'll make a motion that we hereby authorize the hiring of Alicia A. Whitten to the full-time position of secretary two for the Jackson Township Police Department effective October thirty-first, twenty-twenty, at eight hundred hours, the secretary two start rate eighteen point two one four oh dollars per hour, as set forth in the negotiated agreement between the Jackson Township Board of Trustees and the Fraternal Order of Police Ohio Labor Council, Inc., office and clerical employees.
Second.
On favor.
Aye. And the last thing I have is, uh, unpaid leave of absence.
I'll make a motion to approve an unpaid medical leave of absence for Walter L. Peters and to extend health benefits from October twenty-third, twenty-twenty through November thirty, twenty-twenty, with the exception that the unpaid leave of absence and health benefit terminates if the employee separates from township employment or separates pursuant to an O-P-E-R-S approved benefit.
Second.
On favor.
Aye. That's all I have?
Anything else for the chief?
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll go to the administration department. Are you talking through the phone?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, good evening to the board. First thing I have to you this evening is an appropriation transfer request.
I'll make a motion for appropriation transfer request from code three-one-nine dot one-ten fifty-three eighty-seven discretionary admin general capital to three-nineteen one-ten fifty-seven oh-two vehicle purchase, GF Capital Admin, in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty cents.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, next I have to you a, an agreement for the upgrade of our AP system.
I'll make a motion that we hereby adopt and authorize the placement of board chairman's signature on the attached AV upgrade agreement with eight days sound.
Second.
On favor.
Aye. No.
You get that?
Yep.
Thank you. Uh, next I have a, a letter of support, uh, for the, uh, Accant Airport.
I'll make a motion to authorize and place the board member's signatures on a letter of support for Jobs Ohio Commercial Air Service Restoration Fund.
On favor.
Aye.
That's all I have for you.
Anything else from Mr. McCarroll?
Anything else from Mr. McCarroll? Alright, we'll go to the Public Works Department. Good evening, Mr. Rowan.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, good evening to the board. Uh, first item I have under the public works is, uh, I'll share.
I'll make a motion that the public works department consists of three divisions, the Highway Division, Central Maintenance Division, and the Park and Recreation Division, and that the Public Works Director, Public Works Administrative Assistant, and the Public Works Clerical Assistant show direct support to all three divisions of the department, and that effective January 1st, 2021, the total salary and benefits associated with the positions of Public Works Director, Public Works Administrative Assistant, and Public Works Clerical Assistant shall be apportioned amongst the three divisions annual budgets as follows. Central Maintenance Division shall be responsible for ten percent, Parks and Recreation Division shall be responsible for twenty-five percent, and Highway Division shall be responsible for sixty-five percent.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Uh, first item I have under the Highway Division is acceptance of retirement notice.
Make a motion to accept the attached retirement notice from full-time labor specialist Thomas S. Schonk effective November 13th, 2020 at eight hundred dollars.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Uh, next item I have under Highway is budget module 2020 dash three seven.
I'll make a motion for budget module 2020 dash three seven for a scissors lift, um, for the total amount of six thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
You wanna explain that a little bit?
Well, actually, it's, I missed that one part on there. It's gonna be split amongst multiple departments. Apologize for that.
So did you get into the chief's pocket or anything?
I got into both of them. It's a good day.
Yeah, it's perfect.
No, uh, next item is appropriation transfer request for six thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars and fifteen cents.
I'll make a motion to approve a budget, approve appropriation transfer request from code 202 310 5387 discretionary highway to code 202 310 5652, equipment purchase highway in the amount of six thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars and fifteen cents.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Next item is appropriation transfer request.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve appropriation transfer request from code 204 310 5387 discretionary highway to code 204 310 5396 vehicle maintenance and repairs in the amount of forty thousand dollars.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Uh, final item under the Highway is the actual purchase of the lift, uh, lift purchase, sorry.
I'll make a motion that pursuant to our C-section 5549 dot 21, we hereby adopt and authorize the attached purchase from Razor Rents for the purchase of one used 2017 JLG 3246 ES electric scissor lift in the total amount of fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Can I call this one individually?
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Bazino?
Uh, next would be the Park Division. I have appropriation transfer request.
I'll make a motion for appropriation requests from code 214 510 5769 tunnel to code 214 510 5652 park equipment in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars, and to code 214 510 5762 park capital in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars for a total transfer of two hundred thousand dollars.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Uh, next item is a mower purchase.
I'll make a motion that pursuant to our C-section 125 dot 04, we hereby adopt and authorize the placement of board chairman's signature upon the attached contract quotation with Bear's Lawn and Garden for the purchase of a Toro Zero Turn 7500 Yanmar Diesel RD mower as described in the quote for the total amount of seventeen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars, which is priced listed in the state purchasing contract.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Uh, the last thing I have is, uh, for central maintenance would be an appropriation transfer request.
I'll make a motion for appropriation transfer request from code 101 115 5432 Computer Service CM to code 101 115 5524 Vehicle Parts and Supplies CM in the amount of six thousand, five hundred dollars.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Anything else for Mr. Rowan?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board of Trustees. Real simple tonight, I have only a donation acceptance.
I'll make a motion to accept a donation of fifty dollars from Fiesta Acapulco Mexican Grill.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, chief. We'll go to the zoning and planning department. Good evening, Ms. Poindexter.
Good evening, everyone. The first item I have on the agenda is a notice to county auditor for fees and expenses for mowing noxious weeds.
I'll make a motion to issue a notice to the county auditor for fees and expenses for mowing noxious weeds at 6526 and 6487 Hills and Dales Road Northwest Parcel Number sixteen dash three zero four three one and sixteen dash three zero four three three.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, the next item I have, we had a five o'clock nuisance hearing for seventy-eight eleven at Hartford. Uh, we did receive the, um, certified grain card back from the mortgage company, but we did not receive it back from the property owner. So, uh, I would request that this be continued until the November 24th meeting to allow for, try to notify him again.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing till 5:00 PM on, what's the meeting date? November 24th.
Second.
We're skipping from the one meeting, you have two meetings. Do you have a time? All favor?
Aye.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, we'll go to the fiscal office. Good evening again, Mr. Gonzalez.
Good evening. Motion to pay the bills, please?
Uh, I'll make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of eight hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and sixty-four cents.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the October 13th.
All favor?
Aye.
Uh, the appropriation transfer request you have attached is to transfer the money back from the general, uh, the fire levy funds back into the capital fund. There's two of those of fifty thousand dollars. That's the money that came in from, uh, Canton and the Jets, and that came in, and we split it between Lisa and Fire. We had put it into the fire levy fund. We need to move that into the capital fund.
Okay. I'll make a motion for appropriation transfer request from code 101 111 5951, transfer Jed to 210 Fire Levy to code 101 111 5958, transfer Jed to 318 Fire Capital in the amount of fifty thousand dollars, and from code 101 111 5956, transfer Jed to 209 Police Levy to code 101 111 5965, transfer Jed to 315 Police Capital in the amount of fifty thousand for a total transfer of one hundred thousand dollars.
Second.
Uh, all favor?
Aye.
By way of explanation, that's the money that we've entered into economic development agreements, uh, and the township trustees have showed the commitment to the safety forces. It's the income tax dollars that came back in that are getting paid into your capital fund. We need a request for an amended certificate for the one million, four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars that we took in from the CARES money, uh, so we need to do this so we can spend it.
I'll make a motion to request for additional amended certificate from the county auditor.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Um, and then there's a supplemental appropriation for that also.
I'll make a motion for the supplemental appropriation for one million, four hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-five cents.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Um, by way of explanation on that, this is the CARES dollars that have been coming in. This is, as we know it, as of now, our last round of it. The Board of Trustees has made a very, a million-dollar commitment to the small businesses of Jackson Township. It's gonna, and they approved a, a load of things that were requested from the safety forces today and the other department heads. Uh, this money, in my opinion, is gonna be vital to some of the small businesses that were ordered closed for three months. I think our Board of Trustees understands that, you know, they're showing a commitment to them, and that's what makes our community strong. Those small businesses have to stay in business, and that's what funds your safety forces, and it makes our township stronger. So I commend our board on making them. They're doing a lot of work in this application process,[1441.98][1442.01]interviewing, uh, going through, and, um, taking a hard look at the, the applications. So if you guys wanna say anything at this point, it's good.
Uh, you just, you started off, Mr. Gonzalez, you know, this helps our local businesses, and we, you know, they're, I've been, I've been looking at the applications, and the money that they lost in the last census half of the year, it's millions of dollars, millions and millions. And unfortunately, we only have a small pop to, you know, work with, but you know, hopefully whoever applies can get something. That's our whole objective.
And I might add, they're focusing on the local businesses, not looking at the restaurant chains, and that is the local businesses that have been hit so hard. Most of those people are township residents too, so we're all in this together, and I think that, uh, this is a huge commitment to that. Thank you. Uh, lastly, I would like a resolution to accept the rates so that we can, uh, this is what came in from the county auditor on our levies, and you can see that fire levies, this is the first year that your guys' new money's coming in on that, so we'd be a motion to approve those rates.
I don't have an actual resolution. It's just a motion for it?
Yeah, it is a motion, sorry.
I'll make a motion to accept the amounts and rates determined by the legislative commission.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. I'd just like to say thank you to Mr. Gonzalez as the, not only the fiscal officer, but the economic development director, and the work he's put in on that program for the small businesses and weighing that out. Obviously, it's, uh, it's something we're trying to do to help, um, but it's not an easy undertaking to put that all together and have a way to follow it through, and then to put the dollars out from the fiscal office and be able to account for it all is, you're doing a great job, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, under routine business announcements, the next week, the Board of Trustees meeting is scheduled for November 10th, 4:00 PM executive session and our work session, 5:00 PM general session here at Township Hall. Lots of candidates are scheduled to meet November 5th, 9:00 AM via video conference. Those interested in participating should call 330-830-4285. Zoning meetings, there is a zoning commission meeting scheduled for October 29th at 5:00 PM at the Jackson High School Performing Arts Center. The Board of Zoning Committee will meet November 12th, 4:30 PM via video conference. Those interested in participating should call 330-832-80023. Uh, CIC is scheduled to meet November 19th, 8:00 AM at Township Hall. Uh, just a continual reminder about yard waste and securing loads before you come to the site. Um, obviously, with leaf season upon us, there's a lot of leaves that are blowing out of people's trucks and trailers and everything else that's in there. Make sure you get those covered up so they're not coming back on people's windshield and all types of issues. And again, a reminder, no plastic bags to be left in the yard with site. They can't be accepted there. Uh, Halloween trick or treat is still scheduled for Saturday, October 31st, from 3:00 to 5:00 PM. Uh, let's see, any old business? Uh, any new business? Chief?
Good evening again. Earlier this evening, you interviewed two part-time candidates for a full-time position. We have a vacancy in the fire department due to a retirement, and, uh, a recommendation was made after a discussion with the trustees, the fire chief and the deputy chief, and the person's name is in front of me, see.
I'll make a motion that pursuant to the full-time firefighter paramedic hiring policy, the township's personnel hiring policy, and pursuant to the authority granted in our C-section 505 dot 38, to provide for the employment of firefighters as it considers best, we hereby appoint Clark A. DeVitas to the position of full-time firefighter paramedic, conditioned on successful completion of a medical evaluation as to the condition of the individual as it relates to the performance of the duties of a full-time firefighter paramedic, background check, negative drug screen, and any other testing requirements.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, chief. Any other new business?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Uh, good evening. I'd ask the trustees to consider authorizing the, uh, placement of township property at 5941 Portage Street Northwest, uh, for, up for a public bid for sale.
Make a motion to authorize that public bid announcement and package.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
You mentioned that leaves, I just wanted, I thought this was kinda cool. I was going to the park for football on Saturday, and I saw that the leaves were back clear up in the, in the block top, and I picked up the phone, and I called Rich, and he already saw that on his camera at home, and it already disassembled. I got home, and it was on Facebook. Somebody posted the same thing that it got backed up, so that works really well, and I commend you on watching the camera and getting that done on the weekend. You got somebody there to push that back and, uh, open it right up again.
Well, it, it has a reminder too, to that point of, beyond securing loads and things like that, is to try to get as far back into the pile when you're dropping things off. Don't just go start another pile 10 feet away from the pile so that it makes it easier to push things up and makes it easier for folks who are all trying to get in. I mean, just be courteous to all the people that are coming in doing the same thing you're doing, and dropping off piles and piles of leaves right now. Anything else? Anything for public speaks? If there are none, I'll make a motion to adjourn. All favor?
Wait a second.